It is June 19th at six o'clock and I'm going to call this meeting to order. We will start the meeting with the public hearing on the retiree hire of the following employees. Mark Trout, Kimberly Farrell, Kathleen Langner. Are there any public comments to be heard? Okay, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I need an approval... I need an approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes. Now I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on May 15th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes. Now I need an approval of the minutes of the special board meeting held on June 2nd, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes. Now we are moving on to junior high athletics recognition and I would like to call Mark Trout to the podium.
Thank you for having us here. Madam President, Mr. Spicer, it is exciting whenever we get the opportunity to come and recognize our outstanding students and especially our student athletes at all levels, but in particular our spring athletes at the junior high. We just wrapped up a tremendous spring with almost 130 track and field athletes resulting in league championships, broken school records, and state level participation. I'd like to thank Mrs. Getz for being here to help me hand out certificates. This might be her last official public duty as principal of Milford Junior High. Congratulations to her for moving on to the central office. That's outstanding. Also like to thank our coaches. I know a lot of them are out of town, but I'd still like to name them. Our track and field coaches this year, Chad Blackburn, Troy Wigan, Juan Lewis, Marie Owen, Paul Denu, Austin Graves, and Marley Burnham. You know, obviously with summer, I don't think any of them were able to make it tonight, but we want to know that, we want you to know how much effort in that they put into this, which is outstanding. Now, I'm proud to introduce our 2025 junior high state participants and school record setters. When I call their name, I'd like them to go ahead and come on up and they can get their certificate from Mrs. Getz and then when I'm done talking about them, they can shake hands with the Board of Education and our board personnel. First is Lila Cosgrove. Come on up, Lila. Lila is a jumper. Lila, you can only enter three events in the ECC championship meet and she placed in all three events. In the 100 meter hurdles, she was second in the ECC. In the long jump, she was first in the ECC, so she was a league champion. And in the 200 meter hurdles, she was also first in the ECC. And she qualified for the 200 meter hurdles at the OHSA state competition where she was 21st in the state of Ohio. So she didn't, had an outstanding season. She's a fantastic athlete and congratulations, Lila. You can go on up and shake their hands, say hello to the board.
Congratulations.
Next, we'd like to call up four boys who were good individually, but great collectively. They're all multi-sport athletes. A couple of them also competed in the ECC and won some ECC awards, but let's bring all four up and then I'll talk about them. First is Camden Barrow. Liam Cagley. Luke Morgan. And Logan Weisner. Camden was third in the ECC in the 400 meter run and he was first in the ECC in the long jump. So he won the girls' long jump and we won the boys' long jump in the league. Liam was third in the ECC in the 200 meter race and third in the ECC in the long jump. So we dominated that event if you couldn't tell. But really, the main reason why we want to congratulate them is together, the four of them qualified and made it to state in the four by four meter, four by 400 meter relay. For those that don't know, that means each of them has to run a lap and they have to run it, they have to pass the baton and keep on going. They, they did that in three minutes, 41.7 seconds. They were first place in the state of Ohio. And that time set a new school record by over nine seconds. Now, this is, I can't understate what a big deal this is because we cannot find any records of any state championships at the junior high level. So if, if that's not correct, someone can email me, we'll be happy to, you know, modify our history. But this is the first state championship at the junior high level. There are only two at the high school, Tammy McCallum and Doug Casson's boys golf team and those were back in the eighties. So this is a big deal. We'll commemorate this with a plaque at the new junior high and we've certainly set, or new middle school, we've certainly set the bar, the bar high for future. But these guys were fantastic and, you know, at a three minute, 41 second, that means all of them ran a lap in under a minute. So they were cooking that day, I would say. Yeah, they did great. It was great. So congrats to all of our junior high athletes and coaches. We'd like to go ahead and invite the boys to shake hands with the board.
Congrats. Good job. Great job. Great job. Great job.
So congratulations again, what an outstanding accomplishment. Congrats to all of our junior high athletes and coaches and we're proud to continue to send outstanding young men and women onto the high school level. Thanks for having us.
Mr. Ackerman, do we have anyone for public commentary?
We do not.
All right, then we're going to move on to mission moments. And for tonight's mission moment, I want to take a moment to celebrate Misty Getz, our incredible former junior high principal, who was recently named OASSA Zone Two Middle School Principal of the Year. This honor is more than just a title. It's a reflection of the strong leadership, heart, and dedication Misty brings to our students, staff, and community every single day. She embodies all of our portrait of a staff member qualities. Anyone who has worked with Misty knows how deeply she cares about building a school where kids feel safe, supported, and inspired to grow. She sets high expectations and she does it with warmth, humor, and a whole lot of heart. This award places her among the finalists for the Ohio Middle School Principal of the Year and we are incredibly proud to have her represent Milford at the state level. Congratulations, Misty, and thank you for making Milford a better place for our kids. Now we're moving on to our kindergarten discussion and I think, Michael, you want to take the lead on this?
Yeah, yeah, so we've talked about kindergarten over the last couple of months here and so we wanted to make sure that we kind of, you know, put a bookend on that as we're getting close to, you know, the deadline for that coming up in, in August. So after thoughtful discussion and as part of our continued commitment to listening and responding to our community, you know, the boards decided to delay any transition to tuition-free all-day kindergarten until at least next year. But this timeline will give us an opportunity to monitor how the state budget develops. So we won't know until the end of this month what will come from the State House by way of the biannual budget, which doesn't all look great, which we'll talk a little bit more about that late, later. So given that current situation there and our financial situation, we're not in a position to give tuition-free all-day kindergarten at this time. But while no final decision's been made for the future years, we'll continue to prioritize this discussion. We recognize that tuition-free all-day kindergarten is critical lever for improving early literacy, supporting working families, and strengthening long-term enrollment in Milford schools. So we're not able to move forward with tuition-free model depending on the things that we just talked about, the financial outlook and, and the state budget. So in the meantime, you know, we also heard from all the families that the $5,000 tuition can be difficult to manage. And to support those families, what we're going to do is ask our administration to develop a kindergarten payment flex program. That's the name, I came up with it. We can change the name once we develop it. So this will allow eligible families to apply for a modified payment plan that better fits their monthly budget. So this program does not eliminate tuition, but it will provide a pathway to extend payments over a longer period of time with no penalties or notices as long as, you know, as long as you stick to the agreed-upon plan. This will give families peace of mind, that they won't fall behind and if they need more time. We still strongly encourage families who can make the standard full payment or the evenly spread 10-month installment payments to do so. And then for those who apply for the flex program, there will be a minimum monthly payment threshold. We, you know, we will not approve any payment plans that are too small or overly extended as we want to avoid creating long-term financial strain for families or added administrative burden for our district. So I think that this is, you know, a step in the right direction on this aspect while we, while we continue to think about tuition-free kindergarten. The last part I'll say before we get, you know, agreement or questions from the board is that, you know, we do know that there's some appetite from the state to cover kindergarten, all-day kindergarten for our families. So another theme that we've kind of been doing month over month, and I'm sure we'll talk a little bit later, about things you can do to advocate to the House Representatives and the Senate is, you know, while you're writing about things on the biannual budget and these other bills are in front of them, you know, make sure you're also talking about how important it is for them to help fund all-day kindergarten for our schools so that, you know, we're not in this situation. So, so with this, I'm just asking for agreement from the board for us to allow the administration over the next few weeks to develop, you know, a very simple form for a payment plan that we will be able to announce in the month of July before payments are due in August. And we hope that this encourages families who are, you know, maybe on the fence or concerned about the amount of money to can, to go ahead and enroll and then, you know, wait to hear from us and then submit the form so we can help them with lower payments.
You probably haven't thought this far ahead, Doug, but what will this look like to families? Just, I'm, I'm just thinking back to, I had the fall when I had two seventh graders and I needed to all-in on the laptops that we don't do at ChromeBucks, right? Which we've switched now, but like I had a huge bill that fall, like August with high school sports and all that stuff. And Dr. Dunn was like, well, you know, you could extend the payment for the laptop, like pay half now and half later, whatever. So I just self-decided to do that and partial paid. But then it was looking on my statement, just like I was always, you know, I had $400 of unpaid, right? Because I had, I had like kind of left that on there. So is there a way to reflect it that families know, like this month I, I'm going to pay $300 every month even though I know that's going to take me more than the 10 months of school to get through?
I, I think we can do anything you want.
Yeah.
I think we just need to have a discussion, obviously start in committee and then bring it here to the open meeting and just say, this is what we propose, this is what we suggest, and then ask for feedback.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. Make sure that's like a two-line items or something like that.
Or doesn't show up in the rears.
Individual.
Yeah.
Individual line items about what the monthly.
And you don't want anyone to get to the end of the year and then have a panic attack.
Right, 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 yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, and also, so part of this is, you know, over the next couple of weeks, we'll make sure we prioritize time to, to think about this, but as I've also mentioned before, is making sure we look holistically at our process for collecting fees. You know, last two years, at the end of the school year, each year, we have a good amount of people who the community fortunately rallies around, pay for it and make sure that they can walk. And I don't think that problem can be solved all together. I'm not suggesting that, but I think this, by working through this program, it might give us an opportunity to kind of look at what we're doing. We have some new principals, we've got some other things that have changed here recently and I think they've been getting better out of year over year too, but maybe there's, you know, we want to make sure that we continue to focus on that. So, so we're not asking the community to, to, you know, kind of help at the end of the year even though we're so gracious that they do.
Well, thank you for spearheading this. I know it's really important to our families and while we would like to offer pre-tuition to everyone, I think this is just a step in the right direction while we wait to figure out what's going on with funding and what's going on with our finances as well. So I, I commend you for pushing us to do this sooner rather than later.
Yeah, thanks. Do we need a vote on this, Doug?
No.
No?
Just to build on the comment of, of just school fees in general, I do think it was probably two years ago that Mr. Aspie brought to us, like, hey, we have all these student fees, it falls on the high school principal to chase all these down in the spring, how do we make this better? And so I think he just brought it to the forefront and had like 30% collection, right? Just by making awareness. And so two years later, I think we've seen improvement and I think communications to families have helped. I know that I, I get better notifications when there's a fee added on, you know, if I pay the fees in August and 10 more dollars gets added in September, like, I'm not looking, I don't know. But, so there's better communication to families. So I think just as long as we keep, keep going in that right direction, I think it was a great acknowledgement to start and good progress.
Our EMIS coordinator, Mrs. Hare, actually keeps a spreadsheet of all the fees, so obviously we want to include her in this discussion and then work towards the principals, the other administrators and say, okay, what works, what doesn't work. See which, which schools are having a more difficult time and why, and then maybe we can come up with an idea on how to help everyone.
Yeah, I think our fee collection really was born out of the high school administration who is here tonight and, and their ability to be collections, you know, folks at the end of the year. So they came to us, we went to John, we talked about this, and then we came up with some ideas. And I think it was more of, here are the ideas, we need to make sure we have support. And I think it's going to be really important for us to work with all of our building principals with whatever plan we kind of come up with because they're the ones that have really led this charge to make sure that we're collecting fees and it's been the lowest it's ever been.
Yeah.
And it's understandable why that was a hardship because literally they were collecting from fifth grade, seven years before.
Oh, yes, yes.
You know, so it's really hard to get that kind of money.
It is, it is. So, yeah, we're very grateful for them bringing that to us and then, you know, and all the work they've done since then.
Okay, good. Well, over the next couple of weeks, we'll, we'll figure that out and announce that as quickly as possible so people can understand what it is, but hopefully that, that will help.
Great. Now we're moving on to the treasures reports. Can I get a motion to approve the board reports?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Doug, do you want to walk us through this?
Sure. Madam President, members of the board, I am thrilled to give you a snapshot as of May 30th, May 31st, actually, I'm sorry, of 2025 or fiscal year 25. So if I can get Steve to scroll down, you'll see that we are balanced, our fund balanced inside the state software and our operating account with Fifth Third, and then of course our payroll. And then if you go up, you'll see our investment report and you'll see how we did for the month. And then year-to-date, we have earned interest of over $5 million, which of course that is spread out over various things, from the bonds to the general fund. And then if you scroll down, this is my favorite report here. Now, this is a snapshot of the five-year forecast. So this, of course, you have your descriptions, the five-year forecast that we filed in November, and then where we stand as of May 31st. And if you scroll down, Steve, you can see that right here, we were projecting a negative $3.5 million fund balance, but right now we're looking at a $4 million positive fund balance. So we are doing things right. We are correct in moving forward, we are being fiscally responsible, we're not stopping though. We're going to continue to make cuts, we're going to continue to be fiscally responsible, we're going to continue to show people that we're not going to deficit spend. Now, now that I say that, we do have some big expenditures this month, so I'd love to end the year this way, but I have to be honest, we probably won't. But it'll still look good. And then if you scroll down, you'll see our graphs and you can see in revenue that we have gone up. Let's see, because I need my cheat sheet. We've got local revenue has gone up, state revenue has gone up, and then all other revenue's gone down, but not much. And then if you slide down to the next graph, you'll see expenditures. And you'll see that salary and benefits have gone up, but then you'll see that professional services have gone down or purchase services, and then all other expenditures have gone down. So that looks really good. And then the next slide shows just in a different format. So we are excellent. We're looking great. I'm very happy with the way that we look right now. So. Any questions on that? Nope, it's good.
Can I get a roll call?
Sure. Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes. Now moving on to the approval to amend appropriations.
Mending appropriations, so.
Real, real quick.
Yes, sir.
You still got a little bit more to go before you, all right, I want to make sure we didn't miss the Moody piece.
Oh, no, we'll talk about that.
Okay, all right, never mind, go ahead.
Okay, so, Steve, can you hit that link? Okay, so what this is, we in, which I'll do next month, come to the board and ask for temporary appropriations to be, be stated so that we can move forward in spending money. Then by September, we have our budgetary appropriations, which again, remember that we cannot spend more than the revenue that we take in. At the end of the year, what I'm asking you now is to amend those appropriations so that our expenditures are right-sized with our total revenue. So you will see that down here, we are not overspending, or I should say in this column right here. So this gets sent to the county auditor to be approved, then gets sent to the state auditor. So. Any questions on that?
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes. Now moving on to approve transfers from the general fund.
Transfers from the general fund. Okay, so from the general fund, we're asking, or I'm asking the board to transfer money into mainly state and federal grants. Now, these state and federal grants cannot go negative as of June 30th, so I'm asking you to move money over. We get reimbursed for these funds. So what I'll do so that we get the money back is, I actually do this a little different because I got approval from the auditor of state. We do a intra-fund transfer in the middle of the year, so I'll move, so when, let's take 572, which is Title I, most people are familiar with that. We receive the money, we post it into fiscal year 25 account code, and then next year, I will move it, or ask you to move it into fiscal year 26. So it gives a little buffer so we don't have to come back every year and ask for transfers. Right up here, we are self-insured as far as workers' comp, so every few years, we have to put money into that. So unfortunately, you have a few years where things don't look as good and people get hurt. I feel bad about that, but we have to cover ourself. And then unfortunately, athletics was slightly down this year, so we have to put a little money in there to help them. So, any questions on that?
Is this already reflected in the numbers you just showed us or would this be reflected in next month when we look at the ending balance?
These, yes, next month.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes. Now we're looking at vendors for approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Looks like the list is getting smaller.
It will get bigger as the year starts.
No, I mean, if you don't have anything to point out, I don't have any questions about that. They all look pretty straightforward.
All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes. Now I have contracts for approval. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes. Now I have donations to approve. Can I get a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to thank all these community partners. I appreciate that we have such a variety of, of community partners supporting the schools.
Yes, always thankful for that.
Yeah, I see the lunch, the lunch debt on there, that's always, churches are always taking care, care of that, so, so nice. And then is this Mat Millford Basketball Association, is that their, the?
Yes.
For the gyms throughout the year?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Which technically it's rental, but it's a donation.
Yeah, no, I understand, still, still good. I like, it's great, it's a good partnership. I don't have anything else.
All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes. Now we're moving on to the superintendent's business.
Before we do, if I may have one moment. So a week ago, Mr. Spicer, Mr. Johnson, myself, our bond counsel, our municipal advisor, we all had to meet with Moody's. And we have to do this every few years because right now, we are asking Moody's to give us a credit rating. So it's very similar to how you have one personally. So we went before and gave them a, a presentation and I am happy to say that the highest you can have is AAA. Then it goes AA1 and AA2. We are AA2, so we have not gone down and there's only 30 districts above us in the state of Ohio that have a better rating. So thank you to the taxpayers, thank you to the Board of Education. It was a great opportunity, but we are refunding some bonds and it will save the taxpayers approximately $1.7 million.
Always like to hear that.
It's good news.
And that's 30 out of 600-plus school districts, right? Is it 600?
612, yeah. 610, 612. Seems to change a lot right there in that 10 to 12, so.
And what I was, as I was thinking about this, I said, you know, I was thinking, this is also important because it's a rating that comes from an independent outside agency, it's not from the district, you know, Moody has no stake in our decisions, they review our financials, ask tough questions, you know, so when they affirm a high rating, it's a neutral validation of us and, and helps with lower interest rates, more savings for the community. So it's just another indication of, you know, things that we're doing.
And that's, that's really what they, they had to say. Now granted, they're always going to give you negatives. I'm not going to lie or hide that, but...
Well, you could have not brought it up.
That's true.
Just kidding.
Um, but they're very happy that we've improved our five-year forecast, that we're trying to be fiscally responsible, and the fact that, um, we are moving forward as a community, both Miami Township and the city of Milford. So economic development is huge, and, uh, they realize that, they realize that property values have gone up, and they realize that obviously the income of the taxpayers has gone up, and that they can support, um, what is happening in this district, so.
Awesome, nice job.
It's nice to hear.
Now giving it over to superintendent's.
That sounds good. President Mason, members of the board. Uh, we do have some middle school updates. We have some wonderful pictures for you. Here's our courtyard. It's coming together very nicely. Uh, just looks fantastic. Uh, this is our auxiliary gym, uh, pouring the floor, so the auxiliary gym has a, we'll call it a plastic floor, if you will, so it's rubberized, et cetera. Um, so that's coming together very nicely. There's some of our signage outside of the gym. The, uh, the logo looks great. I mean, our, our branding is really nice, uh, and then this one is, uh, popped up, I think, yesterday.
It was only OR the other day when I drove by.
So here we have, uh, our Milford, um, branding, and it looks, it looks wonderful. So you'll be able to see that from Wolf Pen. It's, it's amazing. Gym floor is in, uh, the hardwood is in, uh, it has had time to climatize, um, looks really nice. I think the next picture is, nope, I'll come back to the gym floor. Um, yeah, just, uh, media center area in the middle school on the second floor. Of course, our trailer's coming down and gone, which is great news. Back here to the gym, they're prepping, um, this floor area for, um, bleachers. So we had to prep some of that area prior to, so that, because of the timing of the bleachers coming in. So they, they're, they're prepping this area, staining and getting that ready for the bleachers. And I think they come in Monday. Good old restrooms. I'm, I'm not sure why Jeff chose that picture, but he did.
Well, it was a good number. It's always good.
Uh, just some, some concrete outside. This, this picture here, of course, would be, uh, before the Milford, uh, signage going up top, so, um, they're working on, um, the concrete pours. Here's the, uh, the stairs going upstairs, obviously. Uh, it's really just a picture of the red flooring, um, covering on that stairwell. Uh, this is middle school equipment that we've transferred, or excuse me, junior high equipment that we've transferred to the middle school that we're storing right now. Uh, and the reason we're storing it in some of the classrooms is we do not have elevator access yet, and so we're waiting for that, uh, to happen, uh, hopefully in the next week or so. I think that's it, and, uh, the great...
That's not an MRI over there.
I don't think so.
Just to ask, please in.
Great news, uh, this week at our construction meeting on Monday, um, Paul Modulinski from OFCC commented that, you know, everything that he sees, um, there's, there should be no reason why we're not fully there with our, um, temporary occupancy on August 1. So again, Jeff's, Jeff's folks are moving things, uh, in already, um, things are being delivered, and so we're on target. We're, we're still on target for August 1, and we see no reasons why we won't get there.
When's the middle school start coming down?
Monday, um, so we have, we have some dark...
Junior high, junior high. Don't take the middle school down, sorry.
We do have some dark fiber, um, that needs to be run still into the middle school. Uh, currently, the fiber that's in the junior high runs the internet for every building except the high school. So, starting Monday, they will begin to, begin the abatement process, um, and then, so with, I would say within a week or so, we're still working with HCC and Alta Fiber on the rest of the fiber so that, um, Doug's department doesn't have to work from anywhere.
You can't all squeeze into Panera.
That's right, that's right. So I, I think we'll see, um, you'll start to see some of that coming down in the next, in the next week or so, for sure. All right, um, legislative update. Um, my good friend Parker, um, has helped me capture, um, House, uh, the Bill, Senate Bill 330, excuse me, House Bill 335. Um, rather than go into a lot of detail, um, you know, we're gonna, we'll play the video. The most important thing that we can do, um, as a county, as a community, is to advocate for ourselves, amplify, um, you know, the, the need. You'll, you'll see and hear that the district stands to lose $6 million, the city of Milford stands to lose upwards of $700,000, and, uh, Claremont County, uh, stands to lose $22 million. Um, so this, this is not a good bill. So we'll, we'll go ahead and, uh, we'll play this for you.
Education funding is at critical crossroads in Ohio, and here at Milford Schools, we need your voice more than ever. We've asked for your help before, and now we need it again. Your voice is critical in standing against House Bill 335. Introduced on June 4th, 2025, the bill represents one of the most sweeping overhauls to Ohio's property tax system in decades. If passed, this legislation would eliminate inside millage, ban new emergency and substitute levies, and give county budget commissions the authority to override voter-approved levies. These funds go directly towards core services, including education, safety, and city operations. It's estimated that school districts across the state would lose nearly one and a half billion dollars in funding. For Milford Schools and other districts across the state, that could mean teacher and program cuts. If House Bill 335 passes, Milford Schools would lose $6 million every year. The city of Milford would lose $700,000 annually, and Claremont County stands to lose $22 million annually. This bill seeks immediate tax relief but ignores the long-term consequences, which could result in more levies, more taxes, and bigger burdens on families and businesses. Unfortunately, bills like these are proposed without consulting or listening to the districts and cities, which is why we need your help. Visit milfordschools.org/page/advocate to contact your legislators to protect the guarantee, ensure funding keeps pace with inflation, and remove the cash balance provision. Thank you for helping us keep education strong, supported, and local.
I once again thank you to Parker for that, uh, video. Uh, I did reach out to, um, Senator Terry Johnson, Representative Schmidt, and Representative Byrd. I did hear back from Representative Schmidt and Byrd regarding this. Um, I believe that they are against this, this bill, so, um, again, I would just ask that, um, we amplify our voice and we continue to advocate, um, for, for ourselves.
And it's my understanding that they're trying to, if they're trying, the people who do support this bill are trying to put it into the biannual, biannual budget bill. So while people go to advocate for this, understand that it's on this, most likely on the same timeline as a biannual budget bill, which, you know, only has, what, about a week left of, of back and forth between the House and the, and the Senate for Ohio. So, um, it's definitely one, uh, one of the various bad things for public schools that are baked into the biannual budget all the while, and you know, I must point out, while uh, increase of funds to the voucher program to private schools who are not impacted by the video that we just went over, so yes, please, please, you know, write. If you don't know what to write, write one of us, we'll help you. John will help you. There's a, a lot of partners out there that'll help you, but, um, it's very important that all community members right now take a look at what is in the biannual budget bill, and then especially this one, and just pick which one you want to write to, and just let them know that, you know, you support public schools, and, and there's a lot of this in there that needs to be pulled back.
Um, or you can call right now, they're not there, you can leave a message, you don't have to talk to anybody, so you could call. And I think the message is as simple as, uh, support schools and local government. I mean, I think the fact that the impact is to, e- everything we see, right? It's, it would just be detrimental.
Oh, 100%. Yeah, especially with that bill right there. I mean, 22 million out of the county, I can only imagine all the areas that that will impact, so, um, yeah, and it's not that I, I mean, I just must say, it's not that people don't understand that property taxes need to be better, but it needs to be thought out longer than under this bill. It just seems to be there's multiple different, um, things being tried that don't, that don't seem to be the best solution, where the biannual budget bill could be passed without these things, and then more time could be taken to, uh, fix the property tax issue.
Thank you.
Yep. Will that video, will that video be up online, Parker?
Yeah.
Was that your radio voice on there?
That was nice.
I like that. I thought the voice was...
No, I really appreciate you doing a video like that, because I think it really, uh, boils it down to the salient points of what everybody needs to know, and it's just, these bills can be super confusing, and I think at the end of it, it's very clear that it's bad for our kids and it's bad for the community, so it, it helps to have those videos, because I think it can help you bullet point what you're going to write in to, um, talk about the schools.
Yeah.
Yep.
Great, now we're moving on to the first reading of policy. Um, and that would be policy J E C E, J E D, and J E D A. And then we have policy for approval. Um, I need a motion to waive the first reading and approve the following policy, which is I G B L A.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I would say the reason we're waiving the policy is because this came down from the state, right? Like this is what they're telling us, we have to do, um, I don't know.
It's, it's timely. We have to do it before the end of the month.
Yep.
Okay, uh...
Yeah, important for people to know, like, you can go on, or, these policies are long, but you can go on and click on these links that are on the agenda and read, read the policies.
Correct.
And they're discussed in policy committee before they ever come here, so, um, you know, we approve these pretty quickly at a board meeting, because they're very long and lengthy, but we have a, a committee that's dedicated just for policy. A lot of it's dictated by the state anyways, and it can always be read via these links.
All right, um, I already got the motion in the second, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Let's call the roll.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes. Uh, now I need a motion to approve rescinding the policy J E D R.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes. Uh, now moving on to human resources business, and I have a personnel summary. June continues to be a busy month as we prepare for the 25, 26 school year. We're happy to share that Milford is fully staffed for all certified teaching positions, and we continue to see a strong pool of candidates. We're excited to welcome the newest members of the Milford family. A special congratulations goes out to Mr. John Mason and Mr. Joseph Solis, who have been hired as assistant principals at Milford High School. Both bring valuable experience that complements our current administrative team, and we're looking forward to the great things they'll do together. As we welcome new faces, we also want to thank those who are leaving Milford to pursue new opportunities in their personal and professional lives. We're grateful for their contributions and wish them all the best. June also marks the start of our recommendations for district supplementals, including building level roles, fall sports, and extracurricular positions. Our students benefit from an incredible variety of opportunities to grow and explore their interests, and we're proud of the people who make that possible. As always, current vacancies can be found on our website at milfordschools.org under employment. We're especially in need of substitutes for nutrition and custodial services, which are hired directly through Milford. Substitute teachers and paraprofessionals are hired through subsolutions, and that information is also available on our website. Lastly, we're continuing the work of updating job descriptions across the district to ensure that they align with our overall vision and goals. So we have a consent agenda that I need an approval for, so that would be items G1 through 5.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Berkeley?
President Mason, the board, as shared last month...
Oh, you're... You're on.
I don't think so. Is this thing on? There it is.
There we go. As shared last month, it is always exciting to welcome new staff to our Milford family and hear their excitement and passion in their journey, in their journey to become school employees, educators, and school leaders. So first, I'd like to say congratulations and welcome to all new hires that were on our agenda tonight. I'd like to further introduce Mr. John Mason and Joseph Solis tonight, who will be joining Milford High School as assistant principals. Kevin Metzger, who we, uh, met last, last board meeting, shared that Mr. Mason returns to Milford, formerly being a science teacher, and has recently been the assistant athletic director at Lakota East High School. He brings energy and enthusiasm, along with some administrative experience, to our team. It is evident that Mr. Mason has a passion for education and cannot wait to return to be an Eagle. Mr. Solis has been an English teacher and department lead at Princeton High School. He has had a wide range of, of teaching experience, of which includes PSYOP and middle school teaching. This educational experience will bring unique opportunities for us in the areas of curriculum and instruction. Mr. Solis also shared his passion for education, along with his excitement to bring his career to be a Milford Eagle. And I would also note that his wife is a proud alumni at Milford High School.
Yay.
So, welcome to both of you, and I think they both have a couple of words to say.
Thanks.
Yes.
Uh, for, I'm a little taller. Firstly, I want to thank the school board, uh, for granting me the opportunity to serve the Milford community. Um, I know several people that have graduated from Milford, my wife namely, and members of her family, and so I feel I can indirectly attest to the pride of being a Milford Eagle, and I feel, uh, very privileged to be afforded that opportunity now, so thank you for that. Um, in the last two weeks, I've had the opportunity to interact with several students and staff members, and the welcome has been so overwhelmingly warm and gracious, and I feel that's, that reception is indicative not only of the Milford community as a whole, but to the collaborative nature that that community feels is required to achieve true progress for our students. And so I'm absolutely committed to contributing to the legacy of, um, the established legacy that Milford has, uh, established thus far, and I look forward to developing ideas and ways to, um, progress our students and enrich their lives, so thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. First, I would like to thank everyone that was part of the interview process, to give up their time and their days to come meet with us, and then all the other countless interviewees. It was really impressive. It was, it was kind of like a, um, homecoming for me. So in 2008, a young educator was assigned to Milford High School to be a student teacher. That student teaching position then got a long-term subposition, and then a full-time teaching position at Milford High School. And then I saw this posting for an assistant principal job at Milford High School, and I was like, "Do you do it?" Absolutely. It was like a homing beacon to me. It was, it's time to go back. It was time for this Eagle to return to its nest. To say that I'm excited about being here is an understatement. I'm super excited about working with the staff on a daily basis, with our teachers, and every custodian and everybody else that is part of that high school. I'm excited about working with the community members, I'm excited mostly about working with our students. They're the lifeblood of our district, and making sure that we give them a place where they feel welcome, supported, is the most important thing that we can do. So our job as educators isn't to educate. Our job as educators is to build relationships so kids know they always have a home, wherever it is. And so, that's why I came back, to help build that home. Thank you.
Wait, Mr. Metzger, um, you might, I, I might have asked him, uh, do you know what classes they're going to be working with?
Divvied up roles the other day. Uh, we actually brought, um, our two new hires in yesterday to meet with the team. Uh, we've had some BLT representatives, uh, join us so they can get some face time with teachers. Um, currently, uh, we have Mr. Mason working with the 10th grade class and Mr. Solis working with the 11th grade class. Uh, we've divvied up some other roles like AP testing coordinator, um, and master schedule. AP testing will be, uh, led by Mr. Mason and then master schedule will be led by Mr. Solis. Um, those are two big tasks that need to happen and, and for those of you that have worked in a high school before, building a master schedule is not an easy thing to do. Um, so you need very thoughtful people, uh, to be able to get that done. And fortunately, we have two very capable gentlemen up here that, that would be able to fit the bill for master schedule, AP testing, or just being, um, you know, a genuine human for our students. So, I appreciate that.
Welcome. Welcome to you both.
All right, Emily, would you like to give us a curriculum update?
I would. Um, first of all, I'd like to say, Miss De, I don't know where she went. She did a good job at her first. I was like, she was here, she was here early, leading her first curriculum meeting. Uh, but, uh, this month, we talked, uh, about Reveal Math Training. Um, we have a new, uh, system coming on for the fall that, uh, all the teachers and every teacher who is starting this program will need in the fall. So, we, um, Reveal has worked with us to make sure that everybody who's going to be using it will, will get the training over the summer. If they didn't already, there was already a chance. Um, some curriculum pay for, uh, other staff who are helping update our programs. Um, we had an update on the English learner progress of the 75 students assessed. 73% of the returning students made growth. So, um, that's well above the expectation that they were making. And we continued to, we, um, were able to look at MCASDables data this time, which is student performance, especially in the K2 arena, um, and the growth that they've had, uh, from the start of the year to the end of the year. Um, and that's, that's really about the, the big things. A couple trips this summer for our teams and you can find all the information online.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, I need a motion to approve curriculum pay.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Will?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chestnut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Um, moving into concluding items, uh, Mr. Ackerman, do we have any public participation?
We do not.
All right, we will be moving into executive session for the purpose to discuss the employment of a public employee. Um, before we do that, is there any discussion to conclude?
No, but do you want to announce the next board meeting?
Yes. The next board meeting is July 17th. I'm sorry, July.
That's what says.
Well, one says 17 and one says 19. Oh, no, I'm sorry.